All right, thank you. Hi, everyone. Thanks for joining us. We're just about a minute ahead of actually calling the meeting officially to order, but I always like to have a few.
The microphone's there.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. It's nice to have a few moments to be able to just run through what's on the agenda so that we're all on the same page before we officially call it to order and for Kim to get to do things like remind me to turn on my microphone also. Thanks, Kim. So first, I'll say thank you to Kim in the BevCam booth. He's ready and rolling, so folks can follow us live wherever they may be this evening. And thanks to folks who are joining us here in the council chambers. We do have some members of the public. Thank you. If you are here to speak in the public hearing during this 6 o'clock meeting tonight, or you're planning to stay and speak in one of the 7 o'clock meeting public hearings, all of those sign up sheets are on the table over by the window behind the council desk, and you can get up at any point and add your name. Just make sure you're signing up for the public hearing that you wanted to speak in, and then we'll take speakers as they are signed up for that topic. With this meeting, this is a special meeting. I'll call it to order momentarily. We do have a firm stop time on this meeting. It needs to end by 7:00 because we've got our 7 o'clock regular meeting. And so, councilors, I believe it would behoove us to make good use of our time when we're get to our discussion so that we can try to move through this and be able to get to some substantive discussion and potentially a first vote this evening if that's the will of the council. But I will have to be watching the clock. So with that, I'll call to order this special meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, December 16th, 2024, 6:00 PM. Ms. Kent, will you please call the roll?
Bowen.
Here.
Crowley.
Here.
Feldman.
Here.
Hausmann.
Here.
Rotundo.
Here.
Spang.
Here.
St. Hilaire.
Here.
Sweeney.
Here.
And Flowers.
Here. Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. We're going to go right into our posted public hearing, posted for 6:00 PM on order number 280A. Oh, Ms., can I have your?
Yeah, you have my paperwork.
I do. Hold on, I'm sorry. No, I'm gonna give it to you. Thank you. Sorry, everyone. I accidentally stole the clerk's face sheet for this order. There you go. Did I give you what you need?
Um, I believe so, yes. Ordered that order number 280A, ordered that the city of Beverly, the city council, hold a public hearing on Monday, December 16th, 2024, at 6:00 PM at 191 Cabus Street, third floor, council chambers relative to a proposed order amending Beverly ordinance section 26-14 and ordinance section 69-12, increasing the salary and expenses and unclassified salaries of the city council members, mayor, and school committee members. And this was in the newspaper on December 6th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. As I said, we do only have an hour. We have a hard stop on this meeting because of our regular meeting at 7:00. So I am going to want to go to any members of the public who have signed up in relatively short order, but to kick things off, I'd like to invite our budget analyst, Mr. Jerry Perry. If you would begin with any introductory remarks you may have for the council, and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Happy holidays, everybody. I come before you tonight to discuss the elected salary review that I've conducted for the city council by ordinance. Madam President, I'm gonna quickly, I'm aware that several of you are aware of this stuff, but for our guests here this evening, as well as those at home, I want to go over that quickly with you. In 2022, back in June, the city council, I believe, unanimously passed an ordinance stating the following, specifically that the city council budget management analyst shall, no later than October 31st of the first year of a two-year term, provide a report to the city council with information and recommendations sufficient to allow the city council to consider taking those steps necessary under the city charter to adjust the salaries of the mayor, city councilors, and school committee members. City council budget management analysts shall consider the compensation of current elected and appointed officials in comparable communities, the compensation of department heads in the city, information regarding the regional consumer price index, cost of living adjustments, social security, and current collective bargaining agreements. A copy of such reports shall be provided to the mayor. Such reports shall not be a prerequisite to passing an ordinance increasing the salary of said elected officials. Madam President, as you know and as your colleagues know, on October 21st, I submitted a report to the city council with my recommendations, and I just want to briefly, hopefully that gives you time to go over that, and again, for our guests and those who may be at home. The report, and I apologize, is a bit lengthy, and I tried to keep it shorter than that, but this exercise was difficult. It was very laborious for me. I had to really do it by the onesies, by contacting municipalities throughout the Commonwealth. And again, I'm sorry, but hopefully it was helpful to you. Simply put, and some thoughts I have for you, the city is a very complex organization. We have 42,000 people in this community. We now have an FY25 budget of $194 million, of which we have also eight enterprise funds in the city. The property value in this community is over $10 billion. I want to repeat that. That's with a B, not with an M, billion dollars of the city that we have to oversee and regulate. We have approximately 330 municipal staff and approximately 850 school staff. With that, we also have an airport, a golf course. We have this Southern Essex Zero District. We have the Salem Water Board. We border oceans. We have rivers. We have harbors. I can go on forever for this, but I think it's simply put, it's well understood that the city of Beverly is a complex organization that requires talent and ability to run the day-to-day operations, as well as to run policy-related matters. So in the discussion of these elected salaries that I'm required to do by ordinance, it's very difficult, not only for you, but for everywhere, whether federal, state, or local officials, to try to make decisions on elected salaries. It's fraught with all kinds of political problems. It's difficult to do. And in my research, certainly in the Commonwealth here, for you folks here tonight, there's no question what's going on here in Beverly goes on every place else. It's very, very difficult for city councils or town meetings members or whatever to deal with the salaries of elected officials, and something that I've experienced here. Most governments shy away from this stuff. It's hard to discuss salaries for yourselves and everything else, but it's something I think it needed to be done. I commend the city council for passing this ordinance two years ago. It was a courageous thing to do. As you all know, we won 26 years without a salary compensation discussion for the city council. That was inappropriate, in my view, as your budget management analyst, and the fact that you passed this two years ago requiring me to do it and requiring you to discuss it, I think is good public policy for the city of Beverly. Public perception is really important when you discuss this. I again commend you. You are under no legal obligation to do a public hearing on this matter, yet here we are tonight, and it looks like hopefully some people will speak to it in the public at home. It's not something you're required to do, but under the whole guise of transparency, the fact that you are doing it, I think, is a good thing for the city. Having an appropriate compensation allows for a wider array of candidates. One of the things I've observed in my eight years with the city here is that sometimes there's really not a lot of competition for these elected positions. And the fact that, in my view, especially with regard to the mayor, the charter, as we all worked on here, advocated for a four-year term, and the voters there voted for a four-year term, I think that's a good thing, that may allow for people to have a little bit more competition. And I think the secondary factor in that is the appropriate compensation for that in the hopes that we will see more competition. Competition is good for democracy. It's good for the city of Beverly, and as such, I'm hoping that these recommendations, and depending on how you go with it tonight, will foster that competition because I think it's good for the residents and the taxpayers of this community. Now, it's extremely important that everyone understands, I know the nine of you do, but for the public and our guests here tonight, what we're gonna talk about is not the salary of Michael Cahill. We're not gonna talk about the salary of Julie Flowers, or Danielle Spang, or Scott Hausmann, or Rachel A. Bell, or Lurinda Visnick, or Jeff Silver. They're not on the table. All you are nothing more than placeholders here, and you have jobs at the privilege of the voters of this community. We are gonna talk tonight about the position of mayor. We're gonna talk about the positions of city council, and we're gonna talk about the positions of school committee, and what is the value of those positions. We're not gonna talk whether so-and-so should get a pay raise. It's not how this has worked, and as I think you all know, we do this the year before the election, so it's not a conflict of interest for the city council to be voting on this because it's entirely possible none of you will be here a year from January. We'll see what happens. So that's why we vote for this a year in advance. You're not allowed to vote on this yourself, and it got even more complicated because of the four-year term for the new mayor. So again, it's important we be aware of that. So with regard to the mayor's salary, the mayor here in the city of Beverly, he's the chief executive officer, he's the chief operating officer. We don't have a city manager here. He serves on the school committee, although many mayors do do that, but not all of them do that, so it's another responsibility. The individual sets the budget, the individual handles collective bargaining, he's responsible for just about everything that comes before the city with your permission, as you all know. It's a large responsibility for the mayor's position. I have researched, as you know, numerous Massachusetts municipalities, and within my research, as you know from my report, the mayor of the city of Beverly is on the higher end of the salary spectrum. It's not in question. But again, and I'm reiterating, what my research discovered is cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth shy away from this conversation, and they try to avoid it, and at least you have in the last several years looked at this issue. I did a lot of research on the city of Quincy, Massachusetts with regard to this. You may have seen in the papers, there's a large discussion down there. They upped the salary there for like $200,000,000, and I read about a 300-page consultant report about that. And they did a lot of comparative analysis of town managers, the roles of leadership on a large organization like that. It was really interesting conversation, or interesting to look at it. In terms of that there, in terms of my view, my report, I did not include town managers. If you look at the town manager structure throughout the Commonwealth, especially in the North Shore area here, you will see that, in essence, many of them, if not most of them, are in excess of $200,000 a year on communities that are far less complex than the city of Beverly. So I did not do that. And it's important to note, and the reason I didn't do that was twofold. In order to become the mayor here, you gotta get elected. You gotta, guess I give you a voter, and you gotta be 18 years of age. A town manager needs training, education, experience, so it's a different dynamic to get the job, but once you're in the job, it's the same as the town managers. And I think we all agree with that. So what's the balance here? In my view, the salary for the mayor, or at least the value of the job of mayor in the city of Beverly, is north of $200,000. That will never fly here. I'm not naive. I've been doing this a long time, and I think we all know that, I'm positive none of you will do that, but I was trying to figure out what is the right approach? What is the right thing to do with regard to this position of mayor, mayor's position of salary here? And I came in with the compensation of $175,000 with a 2.5% increase for each of the year going forward here for the four-year term. I think it's the right thing. I know that there's been a lot of discussion. I considered, in part of my suggestions, whether we should take the existing salary, which is $145,000, and add some sort of a cost of living adjustment to that. I know some of you are considering that. I rejected that because, in my view, I think the salary of $145,000 is not the right salary for the position. And that's why I've recommended the 170. I feel the 170 is the right thing to do. It will cost you in the first year for the mayor's salary, if you do go with my $15,000, which is nominal in nature, and it's not a big deal. With regard to the city council and school committee members, as you know, I've recommended $500 each for every school committee member and each city councillor on January 5th, I think it is, of 2026, and another 500 in the year of 2027. I think it's nominal in nature. I think it's fair to say. I don't have to tell any of you, if you were to be paid by the hour, you're getting cheated because you're way below the minimum wage for the hours you put in it. But that's the job you've all agreed to take, and the citizens put you there, and we all understand that. One of the things that grabbed my attention, and I'm near the end, Madam President, I promise, was discussion, the city council and the school committee salaries. I was taken aback by one individual who told me these jobs should not be for rich people, that the job should be for people that have the ability, who may be a single parent. The kind of money that you're making as city councillors, and certainly as the school committee, is not a lot of money. It probably wouldn't even pay for daycare, and that really grabbed my attention. It really was something that grabbed me. So it's a nominal amount again on the school committee, city council. I recommend the adoption of that. I could go on and on, but I want to stop here. I want five more minutes. My apologies, Madam President. I'm more than happy to answer any question, but the bottom line is this. I believe the salary of the mayor of the city of Beverly should be $175,000 a year with a 2.5% increase each year, consistent with the laws of Proposition 2.5, and that the salaries for city council and school committee should be increased $500 each year for two years.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perry. I think what I'd like to do, if you're willing, is go to members of the public, and we'll keep you here, and then I'll open up to councilors, and certainly they can ask questions of you and also have discussion with one another. Thank you. So we will go to members of the public who have signed up to speak in this public hearing. There is a sign-up sheet still over there if you did not yet get to add your name. I do know so far we have one person signed up, and so we'll start with Gin Wallace. Ms. Wallace, if you would begin with your name and address for the record, and I am going to ask Vice President Crowley to keep time. It's been our pattern here to make sure all speakers who may sign up get the same amount of time. Counselor Crowley will time you for two minutes. When you hear the timer go off, if you could just draw your remarks to a close.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
My name is Gin Wallace, 34 South Terrace in Beverly. I pretty much agree with everything that Mr. Perry just said, with one exception. I do believe that the school committee should be making the same amount of money that you guys do. I think they work, the number of meetings that those folks have, and the fact that there are currently fewer of them to spread the work, and the fact that they are responsible for a hair more than half of the city budget, it's hard for me to understand why those, your body and the school committee are not the same stipend, so I would advocate for that. Other than that, I totally agree with the idea that we are not voting on a salary for a specific person, and that we need to be looking to the future in terms of the quality of candidates that we want to be able to attract. So I fully support the idea. I know it is uncomfortable to raise or bring up salaries for your own self, but I do think it's important, and those are my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wallace. Thank you, Ms. Kent. So Sarah DeLuca, if you also would begin with your name and address for the record, and then similarly, Vice President Crowley will time you for two minutes, and if you do hear the timer go off, if you would just draw your remarks to a close at that point.
Great. Sarah DeLuca, I live at 8 Newbury Street here in Beverly. I actually have a quick process question first for this. Am I allowed to ask questions and get a response?
You can ask the question to me, and then I can get the, reflect it back to you, but just not a back and forth during your time.
Gotcha. Well, first, I just wanted to understand, because I am new to this process and trying to understand the numbers and the scope here, and I know we mentioned, he mentioned the increase of $500 a year for school committee members and for city council. How much is the current city council paid? I would love to just know that first, so that we have some sort of benchmark as to what that's going up against. Like, I have an idea, but I would love to know that and just have that on the record for people who are listening in and paying attention to this. And I think one of the things that I'm really sitting with in this conversation is just the fact that here in Massachusetts, we do have a minimum wage, and it is the role of our government to frankly enforce that for people to be making the minimum wage at their jobs. And we have a pretty good minimum wage here in Massachusetts. It's not comparable to the full living salary, the living wage that people need to be making. But I do think that we should be taking into consideration that, though this is a nominal thing, and I know this is not a full-time job for any member of the city council or the school committee, that factoring in the basic requirements and the basic responsibilities and the average number of hours that people are putting in, there's going to be additional things, but that we should be making sure we're at least covering minimum wage for our city employees, and so that, as you so eloquently said, this is not a job just for rich people, so that people are actually able to pay their expenses and can do that. So, yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. You were right on the time, too, Ms. DeLuca. Thank you. Mr. Perry, I'll invite you back up. Ms. DeLuca had those questions at the beginning specifically.
Great questions. I could have kept going here, but the council president gave me the dirty eye to get out of here, so. In any event, for the city of Beverly.
I did it very politely.
Yes, you did. You are always polite to me, but you're very effective, though. Any event, no, it's a great question. Beverly city councils, currently, the council president receives $15,000 a year. City councillors receive $14,000 a year. On the school committee side, the school committee president receives $9,000 a year, and the school committee members receive $8,000 a year. Just to refresh everybody's memory, there'll be two new city councillors with the next election, and.
School committee. Sorry, school committee members.
School committee. My apologies. My apologies. The only other thing I've added based on the research, and I'm more than happy to get this report to anybody who wants it. Traditionally, doesn't mean it's right or wrong, we all have our opinions, the school committees traditionally make a lot less than city councils everywhere. Not only here in the Commonwealth, there's a whole debate on that, I'm not into that, but I thought it was important that at least that be, people be made aware of that, that's all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perry. And we do have another public speaker signed up, but just for those following along, I will just reflect that what Mr. Perry is alluding to about the two additional school committee members is that that body will be expanded by two at large positions in the next election. That was a charter change in the last charter revision. Carol Rain is the next public speaker. And Ms. Rain, if you would as well, begin with your name and address for the record, and then you will also have up to two minutes, and when you hear the timer go off, if you would just draw your remarks to a close. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam President. I am Carol Rain from 27 Pratt Avenue here in Beverly. So this is a really interesting process, and I want to say that for myself, it's very difficult to separate the people currently in the roles from what I believe is appropriate. So I want to put that out front, that I'm sure that has influenced what I'm saying. I believe our city councillors should be paid more. I don't think that $500 each year for the next couple of years, I don't think that's enough. I'd like to see it go up 1,000 now, and I know that you're all, I'm gonna use the word humble, you know, you're not looking for this for yourself, but I so think you deserve it. I so think you deserve it. I don't feel that way about the mayor's role, despite hearing the arguments for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rain. Ms. Kent, is that though? Were there any other members of the public who wish to speak in this public hearing this evening? Okay. Well, seeing none, I'll go to members of the council then, with thanks to the members of the public who are here tonight and those who participated both by speaking and also by being here, because being here is participation, and we appreciate you being here with us. Counselor St. Hilaire, we'll go to you first. I saw your hand.
Thank you, Madam President. So I just want to remind colleagues, as Chair of Finance and Property, that the recommendation coming out of the Finance and Property Subcommittee was to receive this in place and file, both myself and council president voting for that recommendation. And I wanted to reiterate, you know, that I am opposed to any increase for any of our elected officials this year. Mr. Perry, I appreciate your work, but you've also projected difficult fiscal years ahead. I know the Finance and Forecast Committee just met, they're projecting a $4 million budget deficit for FY26. We have difficult choices ahead of us. In reviewing the data, I also wanted to point out, you know, if you look at our benchmark communities, Salem, $150,000, PBD, $139,000, Lynn, $146,000, Gloucester, $116,000, Beverly is right there, we're at $145,000. I see really no compelling reason to suggest that we need to go to $175,000. The median household income in Beverly is $99,000. This is public service. It's not a part-time job. Our jobs are not part-time jobs. This is no way that we're gonna be able to afford to pay us minimum wage and keep that within the budget, right? And I'd also say, you know, there really are no requirements of our job even, right? So, you know, it's really hard to say what the hourly rate should be, and I would just suggest that we do just keep things the way they are and start focusing on some of our other financial priorities. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor St. Hilaire. Other members of the council. Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Madam President. Two years ago, when this came up, and actually it was four years ago when it first originally came to us, it was done by an outside consulting firm. It was right at the beginning of COVID. I think as a council, as we were on the Zoom meeting, we first had just said no to the retirees and their increase of COLA. I believe it wasn't the right time back then, but we at that point took that report that was done by the consultant and took it, received it, placed it on file. Two years later, Mr. Perry and I sat down and I, you know, let's relook this over. It's been 24 years or whatever it was back then. We aren't on this council or the school committee to do this for the money. No one is. And the hours can be astronomical, depending on where we are during the time. We want to serve the people. At least I'll speak for myself. I'm here to serve the people. But the reality of it is, is, you know, Mr. Perry made a very great reference that there is the have and have-nots, who may not be able to serve this because of the fact that it does allow any person who may need that childcare, and it was not me who said it, was another councillor, that may not be able to even consider participating in the process because of that. So this gives them at least an opportunity. I don't agree with Mr. Perry's assessment of $175,000. I think that is a little high, especially where we've seen some of our recent unions and including our next meeting coming up in a few minutes, that, you know, that we're seeing threes across the board. I know the teachers' union was a little different, but, you know, let's stick with the municipal side. I think more reasonable taking the 145 with a 4% increase, which would bring us up to $150,800, than with the increment of 2.5% over the next three years, which would bring it at 162,395. To me, I think it's a little more sensible. It's 11.5% over four years. Remember, whoever is on this council, and I will remind when this process started, there were four councillors who voted that, and no longer were with us, two of them retired, one served one term, and one had a few year, you know, a few councillors in that position. The mayor's position, as voted by the people, is going to be a four-year term, which means that person who becomes the next mayor next year will not have the opportunity and shall not, by legal statute, be able to sign their own order of a, you know, a salary increase. We as a council, whether it's any of us on there or whomever is on in the future, will be on the council to be able to review it in two years. I personally think it's a great process to have in place. I am a firm believer in doing process because it allows something to be continuous. Now, the next council could take it and receive it in place, or if I do nothing with it. But I'm at the sense right now is I think it's sensible would be to do more of a 4% with the 2.5% over the next three years after that. I don't believe Mr. Perry's recommendation of $175 is sensible. I do appreciate what councillor St. Hilaire has to say, that we have other things to attack and look at financially, but from a sensible process-wise, I think this is something that would be reasonable, and I hope to have that support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rotundo. And process-wise, although this is not the process you're talking about, if you, I hear you making a suggestion, when we get to the end of some of this open discussion, we'll move us on to the point where we'll take a motion on the main order, and then anyone who has amendments, that would be the time to make them, so we'll come back to you. Counselor Sweeney, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm of a similar mind to Counselor Rotundo in how I view this issue, to the point that Mr. Perry made. The mayor is the CEO of Beverly, and there's pretty significant responsibilities that come with that, so we should be offering a fair salary to ensure that we have a mayor with the necessary managerial experience to run the city well, because we don't have somebody in that role. We all, we all unfortunately are, we see the detriment of that. It is an elected role, and Counselor St. Hilaire was right, it's a, if somebody takes on the position, it's a public service, and they're gonna need to sacrifice, so I don't think, while the job may be similar in nature to that of a town manager, that we should be looking to offer a salary similar to what a town or city manager would make. Town or city managers are also appointed, and to Mr. Perry's point, have the necessary qualifications that a mayor who is elected might not have. So what it comes down to for me is I looked at the data. I took a list of our peer communities that Mr. Ailes provided to me. It was 21 communities. the differences that we discussed, there's eight cities that fit within this list of peer communities that we use to negotiate with unions, including us as Beverly, so seven in addition to us. Of those seven, only two, Medford and Salem, both at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, compensate their mayor more than Beverly is currently compensated. And so with that, I think in looking at the data, it's difficult to justify the recommendation that Mr. Perry brought before us. However, to the point that Councilor Rotundo made, and it's also made in this report here, I think it's fair to provide a cost of living increase, given that the mayor's term is going to be four years. Mr. Perry cited consumer price index increases on the North Shore north of four percent. The number that I was going to bring forward to the council was three percent annually throughout the term of the mayor, just to match what was offered to the library and public services unions and the contracts that just, or the negotiations that just wrapped up. I think it's worth noting, the council numbers that Mr. Perry recommended are about three percent of an increase as well. I know that none of us take these jobs for the money, but I think points made by Councilor Rotundo, and Mr. Perry, and others, that the stipend is important for those who may otherwise, where money may otherwise be a barrier to run, and so, while it's not a lot of money, I do think it's important that we protect the institution of the city council in advancing modest salary increase that I view as the three percent proposal. And for the school committee, Ms. Wallace's point was very well taken, I think they do a lot of work, and given that we are expanding the size of the school committee, I do believe, even though those increases that Mr. Perry proposed would be greater than three percent increases, I think it's worthwhile to ensure that we're not discouraging candidates from running if the stipends are too low. So my proposal for the mayor's salary would be a little bit different than Councilor Rotundo's, three percent, but generally within that same ballpark.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Sweeney. Councilor Feldman.
Yes, thank you. I am, I have a lot of the same feelings as Councilor Rotundo and Sweeney in terms of, perhaps not at the same level, but an increase of sorts over the next four years, over the next term, would be appropriate. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I really do think that, even though I know that we don't do this for the money, and it's never, it's never going to be as much as we actually work and commensurate with that, I think that it is appropriate to take into account that it should at least be able to cover the cost of a family's health insurance if you have a stipend, and with the cost of things like that going up as part of the stipend and salary that would come with any of these elected positions, it could really make a difference for a family and bring different voices to the table that wouldn't otherwise be able to consider this for their voice and their demographic of the city, and we want representation from all different demographics. And in terms of the mayor's salary, I really, I really do struggle with this, especially being on the Financial Forecasting Committee, because as much as I do, I do know that we need to tighten our belt as a city in the coming years, I also am acutely aware of some of the, some of the financial management of the city that has to occur during those years, really needs a talented CEO to be able to manage the finances of the city to get us through a time when we need to tighten our belt. That being said, we're never going to be able to compete with corporate America in terms of a CEO, and that's, so that's not even a realistic, one seventy-five versus one fifty-five, it's, it's still not going to be making the same amount of money that you can make in corporate America for that type of talent. So, so I, as much as I would like to retain a top talent CEO for the next four years to get us through, I, I don't think anyone should be an elected official, because they are looking to run a city like a business, because we're not a business, and despite what people have said over the last couple of months of why, why isn't this run like a business, we can't run it like a business, and that's, that's just the nature of municipalities. So I agree with a cost of living adjustment and increase over the next several years, similar to what Councilors Rotundo and Sweeney have suggested, and, and that is my, those are my thoughts on that.
Thank you, Councilor. And Councilor Bowen, and then Councilor Hausmann, and then I think we'll, we'll shift, and I'll entertain a motion on the main order, and we'll go from there. Councilor Bowen, please.
Thank you. Much of what I had looked at in terms of the data analysis and comparables has been shared, which I appreciate, and I was looking, as Councilor St. Hilaire was, at median income for the city, at sort of what, what is it that removes barriers to participation for these jobs, as Councilor Feldman shared, and so, so I largely agree that we have, as Councilor Rotundo pointed to, over the last couple of years, brought these positions back to a sort of market rate, as they had fallen behind, and I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with roughly where we are now, and want us to stay there, so I think a cost of living adjustment approach makes sense. Because all of these positions were brought up to comparable around our surrounding communities two years ago, took effect in this, in this term, personally, I feel like the lower end of that cost of living scale is most appropriate, so had been thinking in the two to three percent. So happy to hear there are, there are others who are thinking sort of along the same lines, of essentially keeping pace with reality and the financial concerns and constraints that anyone in these roles might have, and similarly feel like we don't need to, to go too far beyond that. To the point of sort of how all these positions balance against each other, I think it is important that the council as a body, you know, is sort of not falling behind where the executive branch is, and similarly that the school committee is not falling behind where the city council is, in terms of how we all contribute to the management of the city. So we did shift so that the school committee that previously had been set at half of the city council stipends, started to bridge that gap a little bit in the last set of adjustments. I think that was appropriate, and so whether there's, you know, larger percentage-wise increase for the school committee to close that gap a little bit further, I think with the addition of additional seats, the workload of the school committee should stabilize a little bit back to where, where sort of the compensation levels we have are appropriate, but that will remain to be seen, and the next council will get a report on where we are in a couple of years. So, so I think where, where I'm at is looking at those, those cost of living increases across the board, making sense, and not needing to do anything too drastic beyond that.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Hausmann.
Thank you, Councilor President. I won't belabor the points of my colleagues. I certainly appreciate and understand what Councilor St. Hilaire is saying, but I am in agreement with Councilors Rotundo, Sweeney, and Councilor Bowen, and my colleague to my right. I think the real question here is, you know, what is that number, not whether there ought to be an adjustment. So I do think a cost of living is appropriate, and I think that it makes sense maybe to look at bumping the mayor's salary somewhat before applying that cost of living, but I would also limit the cost of living to a certain number of years, so that it is not indefinite. And I do think that it does make sense for the council to consider, I guess I disagree that the, that the school committee is basically at market rate. I'm not really particularly concerned with what other communities might, might do relative to city council and the school committee. I know they work really hard, and again, this is not about people who are sitting in the school committee now, or city council, or the mayor's office now, it's really about the work that they do, and the office that they do. And, you know, the, the points about there not being a barrier to people who might want to, to fill some of these positions as, as an elected official, I, I think that it is appropriate to increase the school committee salary relative to the city council, and I'll, I'll leave it at that. I really think, for me at least, it's a discussion about, about the numbers for the mayor, and increasing the, the school committee members primarily.
Councilor St. Hilaire.
Yeah, I just want to say, I agree with Councilor Hausmann on the idea of setting a number rather than a cost of living adjustment percent increase, and I guess just had a question about the ordinance itself, which is, has us reviewing this every two years now, right? So would it make sense to have a cost of living beyond that timeframe anyway, if we're going to be reviewing it again in two years? So just some thoughts there.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't want to speak for Councilor Rotundo in the event he's going to offer a motion in line with what he proposed, but in terms of what I was thinking, it would be the length of the terms that we're considering. So my proposal was going to be three percent for each of the years of the coming mayoral term. The next council that evaluates that salary would then say whether or not that should continue, whether it should stay flat, some other proposal, and then whatever the numbers that Mr. Perry recommended percentage-wise, would just apply for the two years of the coming city council and school committee terms. I think, I don't think we were planning on addressing anything beyond the terms for those officials that are to come. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're at a good point actually to officially close the public hearing portion, which I left open in case we need to gather more information from Mr. Perry. So we'll close that, refer it back to the full council, and at this point, I know there are counselors who have alluded to the fact that they would like to make motions to amend, but before we can do that, we do need a motion on the main order, so I would take a motion to approve Order 280A as presented.
Seven for discussion.
Did someone move it? Thank you. Thank you. It's the quietest of moving. Thank you. All right, so we have a, we have a motion in a second on 280A. Counselors, this is the time for further discussion, or this would be the time, if you have an amendment, to form it as a motion, and if there's a second, we'll discuss that amendment. Councilor Rotundo.
Madam President, thank you. I would like to propose order amending Beverly Ordinance 26-14 salary in expense of council members by 1A, increase in the salary of each member of the city council to fourteen thousand five hundred, effective January 5th, 2026. Increase the salary of each city, sorry, each member of the city council, effective January 1st, 2027, to fifteen thousand. 2, increase the salary of the city council president to fifteen thousand five hundred, effective January 1st, 2026. And B, increase the salary of the city council president to sixteen thousand, effective January 1st, 2027. Order number two for mayor and school committee member salary increases as follows, proposed order. Do I need to take this separate on these two? Are we doing these separately? My apologies. Council will do one first, and then we'll do the mayor's.
That seems like probably the easiest way for us to do that.
So then I will hold off on the second amendment, or should we, could we continue with both of them, and then take both of them on the floor?
Let's take your first amendment first. So Councilor Rotundo has made a motion for first amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? Councilor Hausmann.
Just to clarify, if I understand, Councilor Rotundo's motion is essentially to raise the city council's salary five hundred dollars a year for the next two years? Did I get that right?
Correct. And as well as the council president's salary.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Councilor St. Hilaire.
I'm going to be voting against this, I don't think there's any need for us to be doing this at this time, and just want to get that on the record.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other discussion on this amendment? Okay. We have a motion in a second. We'll take this one for a vote. All those in favor of Councilor Rotundo's proposed amendment? All those opposed? So that passes seven to, for the first, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Counselor Spine. So it passes six to three. I apologize. Vice President Crowley was in the way of your hand. So six to three, that passes. So we still have the main order on the floor. Councilor Rotundo.
Madam President, I'd like to propose order amending Beverly Ordinance 69-12 unclassified salaries by 1A, increase in the salary of the mayor to one hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred, effective January 5th, 2026. B, increasing the salary of the mayor to a hundred and fifty-four dollars, I'm sorry, a hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred and seventy dollars, effective January 1st, 2027. C, increasing the salary of the mayor to one thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars, effective January 1st, 2028. D, increasing the salary of the mayor to one hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars, effective January 1st, 2029. Part two, A, increase in the salary of each member of the school committee to eight thousand five hundred, effective January 5th, 2026. B, increasing the salary of each member of the school committee to nine thousand, effective January 1st, 2027. C, increase in the salary of the school committee president to nine thousand five hundred, effective January 5th, 2026. D, increasing the salary of the school committee president to ten thousand, effective January 1st, 2027.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Rotundo is making a motion for that amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Councilor St. Hilaire.
So in doing my research for tonight, I actually took a look at state legislative pay across the country, and was surprised to find there's a very wide view of how elected official pay is viewed across the country. Even in New England, Massachusetts State Rep makes seventy-three thousand dollars, across the border in New Hampshire, they make a hundred dollars a year. Rhode Island, seventeen thousand, Vermont, eight hundred dollars a week. So there's a very wide view, and I guess it's all about public service, and how you view that versus, versus the compensation associated with a job. And I would just say, you know, I think we're in line with, with the rest of our communities. I get what folks are saying, it's a big job, but I don't, I don't think these are supposed to be career, career jobs, and the more you compensate this, I think you miss attracting people that are in it for the service. And so I would just like to make that point, and I will be voting against this.
Thank you, Councilor. Other comments from counselors on Councilor Rotundo's second proposed amendment? Councilor Hausmann, please.
I, I again appreciate Counselor St. Hilaire's point regarding public service and why people, why people run, especially for the, for the mayor's office. However, I do think that, as Counselor Feldman said, it is important to make a position that will attract talent commensurate with the, the demands and responsibilities of that position. It is not to say that we can or should compete directly with either city managers or the private sector, but I think it would be to the benefit of the city to make the mayor's salary higher than it is. Whether I agree with these particular numbers or not is another question. So I, at the end of the day, I respectfully disagree with, with Counselor St. Hilaire on, on the basic point that he's making. Thank you.
Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam President. Just quickly, I agree with the sentiment that Counselor St. Hilaire has expressed, that these are not jobs that we should be, that folks should enter to make money, I know Counsel Feldman and others stated that. To be clear, I believe this proposal in front of us, that Councilor Rotundo has moved, addresses more so the cost of living increase, and it keeps us within those seven or so peer community cities that I cited. We wouldn't, even with this proposal, be the highest of those seven. We'd stay in line with Salem, and we'd keep a steady cost of living increase for the term of the coming mayor, which is why I believe this is a fair proposal. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Other comments from Councilor Bowen, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I largely agree with, with the thinking behind this. I think the school committee increases in particular do slowly close that gap, there are slightly higher percentages, and still dollar amounts that feel appropriate to the, the level of effort and the sense of public service that draw people to those roles. And, and being aware that there, you know, the budgetary impact of that will be a little bit greater, because there are two more people, so we'll see that line increase a bit more, not just a straight percentage, because there will be two additional seats there, and that still feels like something that can be absorbed in the budget. And that still feels like something that can be absorbed in the budget. And so, you know, looking at what's the, the difference between a, a dollar amount increase, a percentage increase, in some ways feels sort of small and, and on the margins. So to me, looking at like a 2.5% increase, we throw that number around a lot because of Prop 2.5, would only shave off a little bit compared to the proposal that Counselor Rotundo has put forward, landing at about 160,052, it looks like, by the end of that four-year term. I would be more comfortable landing there, not because those $2,000 are going to change the, the budget that much, but because I do think the, the optics of how we negotiate union contracts, how other cost of living adjustments for retirees and others are done, I think it's appropriate to, you know, at this point where we are providing a salary in that role that can attract talent and that is on par with peer communities, that we're not outpacing the, the style of, of increase that we're able to provide in other parts of the budget. So to me, that difference between a, a 2.5% increase versus a, a 4% or 3% depending on the year increase does make a, a bit of difference. So would, would rather see those lower numbers just because of the, the sort of message that we're sending about how we're thinking through these decisions, and feel as though the difference in those final landing numbers isn't going to change who's able to do the, the job as a result, and isn't going to change, you know, the tax rate as a whole. So, so to me, that, it does matter sort of how we say that and how we think about that, but, but I'm generally in line with, with the overall thinking.
Thank you. Counselor Crowley, I'm going to go to you, but if it's okay, I'll go to Counsel Rotundo, just it seems like he might have a, a direct thought, and then we'll go to Counsel Crowley, please.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Madam President, I am willing to amend my original amendment to bring the initial 4% down to 3%. I don't have the numbers in front of me right now, unfortunately. Mr. Sweeney, Counsel Sweeney, but I'm willing to amend it, and so therefore I would amend mine to be 3, 2.5, 2.5, 2.5, which then would put it at a total of 10.5% over the term of the, the mayor's term. So I am willing to do that.
So Counsel Rotundo is adjusting his motion?
From, from the 4% to 3%, 2.5, 2.5, 2.5.
Is there a second for this motion? Thank you. Mr. Perry, I see that you're up at the.
I didn't, I, Counselor Sweeney has the 3% number up front. I gave him that, but I didn't calculate 3% and 2.5, so I don't have that. I can give it to you in about three minutes if you give it to me, but I don't know if the solicitor's here. Would you be comfortable allowing 3%, 2.5, 2.5, and then I can put the numbers in, or do you have to take a recess to give him the numbers? You need the numbers.
We're going to go to Counsel Crowley. Mr. Perry, if you would be able to work on, oh, all right. We won't go to Counsel Crowley. Is there any other member of the council? Counsel Rotundo.
Madam President, as my colleague next to me has so kindly put out figures, and hopefully Mr. Perry can, it's 149,350 at the 3% on year one, 2.5% would be 153,083.75. Year three would be 156,910.84. Year four would be 160,833.61. That's an exact number. I'm willing to round down if it makes life easier. But I am willing to round down if that would make it life easier, if that's acceptable to you, Madam President.
Counsel Rotundo, yes, please, why don't you go ahead and give us.
We read the numbers over.
Give us your motion, and we'll see if we have a second on this one.
Just, I just got to set the change. So I'm going to amend to first year, 149,350. Second year, 153,083. Third year, 156,910. Last year, fourth year, 160,833.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Perry, all right. So is there a second on this second? I am watching the time because I want to make sure that we do get a chance to, to have a vote, and is there any conversation here, Counsel Houseman?
Yeah, just to clarify, this is not 2.5 each year. You're starting it at higher percentages in the first two years and then going to 2.5?
First year is 3%, 2.5.
I'm sorry, multiple people talking, sorry.
We'll go to Counsel Rotundo.
Madam President, through you.
Yes.
3% year one, 2.5 year two, three, and four. Give and take a quarter of a percent just to round down numbers, but that is the bulk of gist of it.
Okay, thank you for that, that helpful clarification.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on Counsel Rotundo's amendment. Is there any concluding discussion before I call for a vote on this one? Counsel St. Hilaire.
Sorry, if I could just ask a question, and I don't know if it's the right people to ask, but with our bargaining units, it sounds like we've all come to an agreement that 2.5% is where the contracts are landing. Does anybody know if it is actually 2.5, or if it's two, or if it's three?
Mr. Perry.
With regard to the library and the Public Works Department, they are at 3%.
Thank you, Counselor. We have a motion and a second on Counsel Rotundo's proposed amendment. All those in favor? All those opposed? I'll do better counting this time. Thank you. So that passes 6-3 as well. So with that, that brings us back to the main order. And so this would, this is for a first vote this evening. This is a change to an ordinance, so for those following along, ordinance changes cannot happen in a single vote, so it will need a second vote as well, but this is for a first vote this evening. So I have to entertain now a motion to approve Order 280A as amended this evening.
So moved.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? That also passes 6-3 on the main order as amended this evening. And as I mentioned, that is for a first vote. This will need a second vote by the council, which our posted meeting for that will be on Wednesday at 6:00 PM. And counselors, I know for some folks, if you're out of town, we will have the ability for counselors to join remotely for that vote, but we will need a second vote on that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Thank you to members of the public who came and participated and came and spoke. Thank you to everybody following us at home. Thank you, Kim and Bev Cam for keeping us streaming. We do have a few minutes before our regular meeting, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Carry's 9-0, and we are adjourned for our special meeting. We'll be back. Thank you, everyone. After our brief interlude, we're back for our regular meeting, and I will officially call that to order momentarily, but I will also again take a moment just to run through the agenda, so we're all on the same page in what's happening in this regular meeting, having concluded our 6:00 PM special meeting. My thanks again to Kim in the Bev Cam booth, who's got us rolling live so that folks can follow us wherever they may be, and thanks to those who are joining us here in council chambers as well. It's always a pleasure to have folks with us. So tonight, we do have, in the context of our regular meeting, three posted public hearings. We have one at 7:20, one at 7:40, and one at 8:00 PM. 7:20 and 7:40 pertain to money to pay settled contracts with some of our unions, and the 8:00 PM is a CPC out-of-cycle funding public hearing. If there are members of the public here or on their way here watching Bev Cam who would like to speak in any of those public hearings, sign-up sheets are over on the table by the window. You can just check to make sure you're signing up for the public hearing that you wanted to speak on that topic, and if you're not sure, Ms. Kent can also help answer questions or direct you to the right list. And we'll take those speakers in the order they're signed up. Then we've got some regular business to take care of. We'll take a brief break for some subcommittee work, and we'll come back to finish it all up. So with that, I'll officially call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council Monday, December 16, 2024, 7:00 PM. Ms. Kent, will you please call the roll? Bowen?
Here.
Crowley?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Houseman?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
Spang?
Here.
St. Hilaire?
Here.
Sweeney?
Here.
And Flowers?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Counsel Houseman, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Counsel Houseman. Before we jump in, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge some of our city staff who are here with us this evening, with Catherine Barrett, who is our city grants director. Thanks for being here, Ms. Barrett. Gabe Hanafin, who is our airport manager. Thanks for being here, Mr. Hanafin, as well as Bryant Ails, our city finance director. Thank you, Mr. Ails, for being here with us. And of course, still here, following our special meeting for a doubleheader, we have Mr. Perry, our city council budget analyst. Thank you, Mr. Perry. And thank you to members of the public, some of whom are also here for a meeting doubleheader this evening with us, so thank you. We'll jump right in ahead of our public hearings to take care of some of our routine business, and that means we'll start with acceptance of minutes from previous meetings. We have three sets of meeting minutes we can approve this evening. Our regular city council meeting, bless you, from November 12, 2024, our regular city council meeting from November 18, 2024, and regular city council meeting from December 2, 2024. Is there a motion to approve those three sets of minutes?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries 9-0, and those are approved. Thank you very much. Ms. Kent, let's go to communications from his honor, the mayor, please.
Order number 347, dear honorable city council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has received a $10,100 donation for the council on aging. This anonymous donation will benefit the council on aging and senior citizens in our community. This is an unrestricted gift per the anonymous donor's request. In addition, the council on aging has received 170 in various gift cards from McLean Middleton Law Firm. These gift cards are to be distributed to low-income, unhoused, or food-insecure senior citizens via outreach efforts. We want to express sincere thanks to these generous donors for their.
Plan therapy.
Plan therapy, thank you, during the holiday season. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gifts to the city can be expended for the prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve these donations. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number 348, dear honorable city council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has been awarded a $28,285.84 Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program Grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. This grant funding will be used to the, by the police department to purchase 64 bulletproof vests for officers to wear for protection. These vests need a replacement every five years. The Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program, administered by the Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, units of local government for up to 50% of the cost of body armor vests purchased for law enforcement officers. Since 1999, more than 13,000 jurisdictions have participated in the BVP program with a total of $573 million in federal funds for the purchase of more than 1.5 million body armor vests. Since FY 215, body armor vests were directly attributed to saving the lives of at least 305 law enforcement and correction officers. The Beverly Police Department last received this grant in summer of 2019. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by acting on this matter at your next meeting. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number 349, dear honorable city council, I hereby request the honorable city council approve the attached lease between AVR Flight School and the Beverly Airport Commission. The lease includes approximately 780 square feet of general office space located at Building 45 at the airport. The annual rent for the premise will be 15,600. The leases were approved by the Airport Commission on their, at their November 18, 2024 meeting. Please initiate action at this upcoming meeting. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 350, dear honorable city council, the City of Beverly Engineering Department has been awarded a $150,000 grant from Mass Department of Environmental Protection Clean Water State Revolving Fund Grant Program to advance a project. A legislative vote and city clerk certification are required for the full project cost of amount of $260,000. Funding will be used to develop a robust geographic informational systems asset database with various assets classes across all utilities, including wastewater. The City of Beverly performs regular inspections and evaluations of sewer subsections and associated infrastructures assets, and this grant award will be instrumental in integrating and migrating data building out a robust vertical asset, refining the horizontal assets, defining role responsibility, level of service, risk, and priorities across all waterway-related asset classes. The total project cost, $260,000, is approved, the understanding that $150,000 will be provided by the grant awarded by the CWSRF program. A cash match of, cash match of $55,000 will be provided by the infiltration and inflow research and development budget, and kind services from municipal employee hours on this project will account for the remaining $55,000 of the total project cost. Please, please approve this funding appropriation by acting on this matter at your upcoming meeting. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Dear honorable city council, order 351, sorry. I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has received a donation of 16 turkeys and 10 trees from the U.S. pavement. and the trees is approximately $1,880. We are grateful of U.S. payment who donated these items to support our veterans. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grants, earmarks, donations, or gifts to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve these donations. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number 352, dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the University of Massachusetts Lowell Digital Equity Partnership, which is funded by the Mass Broadband Institute at the Mass Tech Collaborative, would like to give the Beverly Public Library the following technology items to help improve the digital literacy skills of residents in the City of Beverly. 18 Chromebooks, one mobile locking laptop charging cart, one Brother Enterprise laser printer, six Network UC, U6 LR UniFi AX3000 long-range access points, and six power-over Ethernet injectors. There are no restrictions on these gifts, which benefits the Beverly Public Library. The gifts will enable the library to expand its capability to deliver digital literacy instructions to community members in the form of mobile laptop computer lab, as well as enhance the library's Wi-Fi coverage. The total value of the donation is estimated at $9,200. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be spent for their prescribed purpose. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number 353, dear Honorable City Council, I respectfully request that you approve a transfer from the Golf and Tennis Enterprise Accounts Fund Balance Point certification into a capital project fund to pay for costs associated with planned course improvements. The city has received bids for the work and is hoping to enter into contract to begin the work in early 2025. The transfer request is in the amount of $350,000. Please initiate action at your next city council meeting by setting a public hearing. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property, and we'll set that public hearing. Let's go to communications from other city officers and boards, please, Ms. Kent.
Order number 354, from the city clerk, a renewal application for Class II Motor Vehicle Dealer's License for NDRN Inc., DBA Five Star Auto Repair at 191 Essex Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 355, the city clerk, renewal application for a Class II Motor Vehicle Dealer's License for Beverly Auto Center at 129 Brimble Labs.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 356, from the city clerk, a renewal application for a Class III Motor Vehicle Dealer's License for Eastern Cycle Savage Inc., 87 Park Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order 357, the city clerk, renewal application for a Class II Motor Vehicle Dealer's License for IGM Enterprises, DBA Cobblestone Motors, 119 Rantool Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 358, from the city clerk, renewal application for a taxi delivery license for Malden Car Service Inc., 52 Friend Street, for two vehicles.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 359, from the city clerk, a renewal application for a Class II Motor Vehicle Dealer's License for Debaco Service Center, 474 Rantool Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 360, from the city clerk, a renewal application for an automatic amusement device license for Anchor Pub and Grill, 20 Cabot Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 361, from the city clerk, a renewal application for an automated amusement device for the Lucky Dog Sports Bar, 129 Cabot Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 362, a renewal application for an automated amusement device license for Hale Street Tavern, 717 Hale Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order 363, from the city clerk, a renewal application for the automated amusement device license for Beverly Franco American Club, 44 Park Street.
Please refer that also to Legal Affairs.
Order number 364, from the city clerk, a renewal application for an automated amusement device license for Victoria Rocky Post, 56143 Brimble Labs.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 365, from the city clerk, a renewal application for an automated amusement device license for Union Club Inc., 141 Cabot Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 366, from the city clerk, a renewal application for a lodging house license for 68 Dane Street LLC DBA Greycroft Inn at 68 Dane Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 367, from the city clerk, a renewal application for a lodging house license for 276 Street LLC at 276 Men tool Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs as well.
Order number 368, from the city clerk, a renewal application for a lodging house license for North Shore Veterans Counseling Service Inc. at 45 Broadway.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 369, from the city clerk, renewal application for a lodging house license for Gerold House at 78 Lothrump Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs as well.
Order number 370, from the city clerk, renewal application for a lodging house license for Grigor Krajacy at 32 Broadway.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 371, from the city clerk, a renewal application for a lodging house for Garden City Residence Cosmo Realty Trust at 490 Rantool Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 372, from the city clerk, a new application for a lodging house license for Barry's House at 23 Wallace Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs, too.
Order number 373, from the city clerk, new application for a lodging house for Cabot Lodge LLC at 91-93 Cabot Street.
I know this will shock you, but please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
I know this will shock you, it's not from the city clerk. Order number 374, from President Flowers, appointments Counsel Rotundo to serve as liaison to the Beverly Police Department's Community Advisory Committee, and Counsel Crowley to serve as the school committee's finance and facilities subcommittee.
Thank you, counselors, I would entertain a motion to approve this switch in appointments for two of your fellow counselors on the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries nine zero, thank you very much. Make those changes to appointments official. Let's go to communications, applications, and petitions, please.
Order number 375, National Grid to install a 1J O pole on River Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services to set a public hearing. Unfinished business from a previous meeting.
Order number 279-2024, President Flowers, a letter for council to recommend the safety concerns of the North Shore Education Consortium to parking and traffic.
So, counselors, we did receive from the Parking and Traffic Commission their recommendation. So Ms. Kent will attach that to the order and distribute that. And the next step then would be for me to file an amended ordinance to parking and traffic for us to take up. So we'll leave this under unfinished business from a previous meeting. We'll attach their recommendation to the order, and you will receive that as well. But the summary is they're recommending it. So Ms. Kent, actually, we'll return that to you, that's there.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to take a brief recess. Wait, I'm sorry. Thank you, for four minutes.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Four minutes, and we'll be back for our 7:20 public hearing. Thank you very much, everyone. Call the full council back to order. And it is 7:20, so with that, we'll open our posted public hearing on order 296. Ms. Kent?
Order 296, the City of Beverly ordered that the city council, the City of Beverly, hold a public hearing on Monday, December 16th, 2024, at 7:20 PM at 191 Cabot Street, Third Floor, City Council Chambers, relative to a transfer request of $36,112 into the Library Department Budget to fund costs associated with recently agreed upon memorandum of agreement between the City of Beverly and the Library employees, chapter of the AFL-CIO Union. And this was in the newspaper on December 6th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. Mr. Ailes, I see that you're at the podium and ready to go, so I will invite you to open up this hearing with any comments you may have for us.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President, good to see you all this evening. Yeah, I'll just be brief, because you all see these fairly regularly. We have a number of units that we collectively bargain on the city side of operations. This is one of the first ones that we have settled for this round of negotiations. The request is for $36,112 to be transferred out of the reserve for union negotiations. You may recall during budget season, when we were talking about how to structure the budget with the uncertainty of some contracts that had yet to be negotiated, that we purposely left a reserve aside for this very purpose. So now that the contract has settled, with your approval, of course, we would be looking to transfer those funds in to the library budget to cover the costs associated with FY '25 adjustments to the salaries of those employees. I'm here this evening with Assistant City Solicitor, Mr. Dole, who was instrumental in a lot of the ongoing negotiations that took place. So between the two of us, we're happy to answer any questions you may have about the specifics.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ailes, and thank you, Assistant Solicitor Dole, for being here as well. And I am remiss, I did not mention that at our 6:00 PM meeting, Assistant City Solicitor Beth Oldmixon was here, and thank you to her as well. There are currently no members of the public sign up to speak in this public hearing. Are there members of the public here who wish to speak in this public hearing? Okay. Counselors, I'll open it up for questions or discussion. Are there any questions or conversation for Mr. Ailes, Assistant Solicitor Dole? Counselor Houseman, I see that you are gesturing with your finger.
I just wonder if we might hear any comments from Mr. Perry on this matter?
Thank you. Mr. Perry, do you have any comments for us on this matter?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I wrote to you last week about this matter. As Mr. Ailes indicated, we appropriated $750,000 for reserve for union negotiations. So I can inform you that there's certainly sufficient funds for the transfer. The contract is a 3% wage increase for three years. There's some increased longevity for the bargaining units. They've added Juneteenth as a paid holiday. They get sick leave for care of domestic partners. Columbus Day is now known as Indigenous Day. Replaces gender language, to be gender neutral, and the union agreed to withdraw all prior grievances. Madam President, I recommend adoption of the mayor's proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Counselors, any other discussion? Counselor Spang?
Thank you, through you, Madam President. I did just have a question on the last bullet point about withdrawing all prior grievances. Is that standard language that would go in a contract renewal, or are they actually withdrawing anything?
Good evening, Jesse Dole, Assistant City Solicitor. That is frankly boilerplate language that goes into all MOAs. There were no pending grievances by this, and to prevent the next public hearing, the same question, there were no pending grievances out of either of the DPS bargaining units. But it is standard to put into the MOA.
Thank you, Assistant Solicitor Dole, thank you, Counselor Spang. Counselors, other questions or discussion in this public hearing? With that, I'll close this public hearing and refer it back to the Committee on Finance and Property for further action this evening. And because we do have about 15 minutes now before our next public hearing, I'd entertain a motion to take a break for some subcommittee work.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll have legal affairs in the committee room, finance and property here, and public services in the hall.
Call to order the Committee on Finance and Property. Good evening. So I think we can take up first tonight, order 353. This is a $350,000 budget transfer request for the Golf and Tennis Enterprise Fund into a capital project fund for some planned course improvements. I think tonight, we're just setting a public hearing, so I'd entertain a motion to set a public hearing on January 6th at 7:45, January 6th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That is approved, three to zero. Let's see. I see we have Mr. Ailes and Ms. Barrett with us tonight. I think we'll start maybe with order 347. This is a donation of $10,000, $10,100 to the Council on Aging from an anonymous donor. And it also pertains to some gift cards for $170 that were donated by the McLean Middleton Law Firm to benefit our seniors. I would entertain a motion that we approve that gift.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approve, three to zero. This one looks timely as well. Order 351, donation of 16 turkeys and 10 trees from U.S. Pavement to support our veterans, and those are targeted to veterans in financial need. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve, three to zero. Okay, moving right along. Ms. Barrett, order 352, gifts from UMass Lowell Digital Equity Partnership to the Beverly Public Library. Looks like equipment valued at $9,200, anything you want to share with that one?
We actually have another grant coming from them for the January 6th meeting that's going to benefit the Council on Aging. I think that grant will be... I think that grant will be possibly up to $15,000, and the devices will be able to be kept by the senior citizens and taken home. Very similar list of what they will be providing. It wasn't quite ready for this meeting, but...
No match associated with that?
Nope, no matches. Yep.
Any question? I guess entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
That's approved, 3 to 0. Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Order 348, this is another grant for $28,285 from the Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program to purchase 64 bulletproof vests for our police department. I would entertain a motion that we approve that.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That one's approved. 3 to 0. Thank you. Let's see. Go to Order 350. This is a $150,000 grant from Mass Department of Environmental Protection, Clean Water, State Revolving Fund Grant Program. Ms. Barrett, anything you can tell us about this one?
Yes, so actually, the council already approved this grant back at the end of May, early June, but Mass DEP asked us to come back and have the legislative body approve the full amount of funding. So there's a $150,000 grant, and there's a match, and then there's the in-kind from our employees. It's up to, I think, 20 employees in public services. So the total amount is the $260,000, and they wanted that, all that wording, in the legislative document that you vote on. So it's really just coming back procedurally to have you vote on that.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett.
You're welcome.
Entertain a motion on this one?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
That one's approved, 3 to 0. Let's see, so we just got back Order 296 tonight from the public hearing. You can act on that, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So this was the budget transfer request of $36,000 for the contract with the Beverly Public Libraries, chapter of the AFL-CIO. Counselors, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Further questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
It's approved, 3 to 0. So Order 342, this is a budget transfer request of $98,000, Department of Public Services to fund the costs associated with the contracts for the DPS workers. Can we take that up tonight, or is...
I think we have the public hearing still.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have a public hearing tonight?
We'll have to come back to our...
Tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll hold that one. What about the CPC funding? We can take that up. Go ahead.
That's public hearing. Just, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you would like to take up orders Number 314, 315, and 316.
Yeah.
I know Mr. Perry's here with us, so it may be...
Yeah, I was going to ask Mr. Perry if he could speak to those.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I wrote to you back on November 15, and I'm glad the finance director's here. The administration is acting for accepted local options to defer payments on sewer charges, water charges, and betterment assessments. There's only one or two people, I think, who even fall in the category. Mr. Ailes can address that better than I, but bottom line to it, it's really an ministerial thing. It would make life easier for a few taxpayers. It makes it a lot easier for the finance department, and I recommend adoption of all three orders.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perry. Any questions, members of the subcommittee? Okay. Guess we'll take them up individually. We'll take up Order 314, acceptance of the local options to defer payment of sewer charges. Accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That is approved, 3 to 0. Take up Order 315, acceptance of local options to defer payment of water charges. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is also approved, 3 to 0. We will also take up Order 316, the acceptance of local options to defer payment of betterment assessments. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, if I could suggest, I know you and I talked briefly to try to clean up some stuff. You have two other orders there still on your docket. One is the 2024 Capital Expenditure Plan. Quite frankly, we're getting ready to do 2025 in a couple of months. It's been kind of laying there a long time. This body has historically received and placed in file. That would be my recommendation, to get it off your docket.
Yeah, I would agree with that assessment. Counselors, any questions or comments on that? Okay, I would entertain a motion that we receive and place on file, Order 116.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, one other. I don't know how you want to proceed on this, but you have one of the, we had a meeting, as you know, a letter regarding second water meters. It's one of the last things, whether you, if the body is...
Yeah, I...
If you're ready to proceed on that.
Yeah, counselors, I think at this point, we've had a discussion as the letter requested, and if there is action to be taken, it would require us another order. So I would entertain a motion that we receive and place that on file as well.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
And, Mr. Chairman, finally, Order Number 306, sponsored by Counsel Sweeney. I've already made contact with the assessors' office. It's my hope to have a meeting with them in early January to discuss those issues, and that will be coming hopefully by the end of January for this, for your consideration.
So I guess, does this stay on our agenda, or is it, it ends at the end of the year, correct? Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you. If, so just to clarify to that point, Mr. Perry made, the proposal, if we had adopted it now, wouldn't go into effect until July 1 anyways. So I'm more than happy to refile more or less the same proposal in January so that we can pick the discussion up at that point.
Okay, great idea. So would you prefer we receive and place that on file, or are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I can explain to the full council the process point on that.
Okay, so let's entertain a motion, receive and place on file, Order 306.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Kent, what about Order 334, the reapportment? Can we make that tonight?
Okay.
Okay. Finance and Property Committee members, I would entertain a motion to approve the reapportment of Richard Scanlon to serve on our Board of Assessors.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That is also approved, 3 to 0. Wow, I think we got through all of our agenda in finance and property. Nice job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great work. We'll get two more public hearings tonight, but we'll see how that shakes out. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting on finance and property.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
general fund budget to fund costs associated with the recently settled contracts between the City of Beverly and the DPS workers and foreman unions. And this was in the newspaper on December 6th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. I will mention before I go to Mr. Ailes that there is a sign-up sheet for this public hearing and the 8 o'clock public hearing that is going to be on CPC out-of-cycle funding. Those sign-up sheets are on the table under the window over here. Members of the public can add their name to the sheet for the hearing under which they wish to speak, and we'll take those speakers in the order they're signed up. Mr. Ailes, we'll go to you.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Similar to the previous public hearing, what the mayor is requesting is a transfer from the Reserve for Union Negotiations. This is a second of the contracts that will be coming before you over the next couple of weeks. This particular one is requesting $98,600 be transferred into the DPS budget to deal with costs associated with the FY '25 salary adjustments pursuant to the agreed-upon MOA with your approval. The primary components of this, and I'm sure Mr. Perry, in his memo, I know he addressed it, but the main areas of this MOA relate to wage adjustments, which are 3% each of the three years that the MOA covers, as well as some adjustments to longevity, certain stipends, CDL license stipends, as well as, I believe, there's a CPR stipend as well that's in here. So that's it in general. Again, Assistant City Solicitor Dole is here if you have any specific questions about the contract or its terms, but request your approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Mr. Perry, why don't we have you come on up? And if there's any comments, I'll save Counsel Housman from having to gesture.
I'll be quicker this time. He stole all my thunder. So yeah, again, I wrote to you last week. You got that. The contract's a similar to the library, a three-year contract. There's sufficient funds there. Madam President, I recommend adoption of the mayor's proposal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perry. Are there members of the public? Oh, Ms. Kent, do we have the sign-up sheet for this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there members of the public who did wish to speak in this public hearing? Ms. Kent tells me there's no one on the sheet. Okay. Counselors, are there questions or comments? Counsel Feldman?
Just a kind of procedural question in terms of the money and how the contract works out. When we look at these transfer amounts of $98,600, what, is that just for this fiscal year? And then is it baked into the budget, the contract, for the next fiscal year? Is that, that's just for this fiscal year, that amount?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor. Other questions or comments? Counsel Spang?
I just had one. I noticed the stipend for first aid certification, and then there's language requiring employees hired after this agreement was executed to do that. What is the first aid certification? Sorry.
Mr. Dole?
Jesse Dole, Assistant City Solicitor. So it's a combined, the American Red Cross has certification for combined first aid, CPR, and AED. We currently, that in the most recent, the prior CBAs, that was added to the BMEA CBA, and then the CBA prior to that was added to the librarian CBA. So we're just updating that now. So that DPS also make sure that we have DPS employees that are certified, given that they're out, what they do, and out in the public, that they be, maintain that certification, receive compensation for it.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Dole. Counsel Bowen?
Thank you. My question was just on, on the overall budgetary impact. I know in the last couple of budget cycles, this is one of the departments where we've had vacancies and been trying to balance the individual role salaries and the department budget, and making sure that we're able to attract talent in a field where the numbers are sort of all over the place with organizations that we're competing with in the private sector as well. So, so just curious, in both the calculation of the amount that's needed for this year, being based on, you know, a contract that is for a set of roles and for how many of those roles are vacant right now or could be filled, in part thanks to the new contract, just sort of where that lands in terms of budgetary impacts? Are we looking at more down the road? Is this going to hopefully help with some of the staffing needs in DPS?
Thank you.
The, I can, without speaking for Commissioner Michael Collins about, you know, the individual needs that they have, or open positions, retention, things like that, I will at least represent in my, in the bargaining with, with both the DPS employees and the DPS foreman units, the items that are in this MOA, the amendments to vacation, some of the stipends, longevity, uniforms and clothing, things like that, those were all asks that were, that at least were represented to me that the, these two bargaining units felt were important to, for the purposes of retention and recruitment.
Thank you, Mr. Dole. Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments from members of the council in this public hearing? I'll close this public hearing and refer that back to the Committee on Finance and Property for further action this evening. And I know there is some subcommittee work outstanding before our 8 p.m. hearing, so I would entertain a motion, take another brief break for some subcommittee work. Okay, great. All those in favor? Thank you. We'll go back to the same locations. We'll have legal in the committee room, public services in the hall, and finance and property back up here. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Call the full council back to order. And we do have our 8 o'clock posted public hearing. So we'll officially open that. This is a public hearing on Order 343. Ms. Kent?
City of Beverly ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, December 16th at 8 p.m. 191 Cabot Street, Third Floor, Council Chambers, relative to the CPC out-of-cycle funding recommendation request for additional CPA funding for Independence Park 400+ Lynch Park and Gerdl House. And this was in the newspaper, December 6th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. I see that Derek Beckwith is here with us to kick things off. Before I turn it over to you, Mr. Beckwith, I'll just mention for members of the public, there is a sign-up sheet for this public hearing. And if you'd like to sign up to speak, the city clerk is walking over in the direction of where that is right now. And you can add your name, and we will take public comment in the order they're signed up. Do I have it now? Mr. Beckwith, great job. I'm going to put it right over here between Counsel Bowen and me. So if someone would like to come up at any point and add your name before we get to public comment, you may. Mr. Beckwith, we'll turn it over to you to get this started. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Distinguished counselors, it's good to be here again. I'm Derek Beckwith. I'm chairperson of the Community Preservation Committee. I'm honored to be here on behalf of the committee tonight to talk about our recommendations for out-of-cycle projects, three of them, hopefully that, that, for you to appropriate funds for this evening. And for the record, I'm at 564 Hale Street. So there, that's it. Usually when people before us, before the planning board, always forget to say their address. So trying to be a good citizen here. So we have three time-sensitive projects that came before us that, as we looked at the criteria for out-of-cycle, there are six different criteria, including the fact that these need to be funded right away outside of the typical cycle, which usually has projects able to receive funding in June or July of the year. These all have different triggers. I'll try to quickly address those and leave time for, for discussion, et cetera. The first is the Beverly Quadrasentennial. I knew I was going to flub that one. The 400th anniversary of-
Mr. Beckwith, I'm just going to have you pause for one second. Counsel Rattendo needs to recuse himself from this portion of our conversation because of his connection to the Beverly 400+.
Okay.
I'll let him go, and then I will invite you to resume. I'm so sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. No, thank you. The, the celebration for our 400th anniversary is in 2026, but the 400 Committee is already working to prepare for that. And there are some improvements to Independence Park, which will play a significant role during that time as a historic part and the site of many viewings of naval, not battles necessarily, but ships and, and things like that that are part of our heritage that need to happen now and get into design right away. And that's really what this first project is. It's for $125,000 for design work for Independence Park that would really look at a range of things. Hold on as I get my notes out. Survey and assessment of existing conditions, conceptual plans for needed upgrades to walkways, plantings, accessibility improvements. The, the time for that study will include public comments and the presentation of different options and things like that. So it has to really get started now. So that's the time-sensitive nature of that. You'll notice in the paragraph description that we sent to you, the word signage is also in there. Signage is something we do not cover, we do not pay for. So that actually, you can strike that from, from your, from the, the project in terms of your consideration tonight. So that's one that will be from, would be from, for the purposes of rehabilitation for recreation and also preservation of historic resources. So it falls under a couple of different categories. Additionally, the, the next project is for $179,385 for Lynch Park, for a climate resiliency design and permitting study and activity to move things forward from the recently completed Phase II of that project with due speed, as there are a number of issues that have to be addressed as quickly as possible. Obviously, we're aware of what those issues are. And so this is time-sensitive in nature, falls under, again, under recreation and historic resources. And the third is the Gerdler House Generator Project. Now, you may remember the Gerdler House, which operates and provides affordable housing for 14 residents of Beverly at this point in time and has for about 100 years. We funded this project, but under the affordable housing category, and you approved it on our recommendation. And it turns out, as we were working towards the drafting of the MOU, that this has been the category that it was approved under for support of and preservation of affordable housing is one that there's been ongoing debate, legal debate about. And so how we looked at, even though multiple committees, CPCs around the state have approved generators under the affordable housing project, and we did the same, that's something our city solicitor really felt was not an appropriate category for it to come for. So we can't really move forward with that project because, because of that. They have withdrawn that project, and they filed an out-of-cycle so that we could try to get this done before the heart of the winter comes upon us. And we're doing it this time under historic preservation. this time under historic preservation. The building itself is a historically significant building, and this is to preserve the structure of the building itself. So for this purpose, it's a legal technicality, that's why we're here before you, but know that the 70-odd thousand that was appropriated before is not going to be moving forward. That project has been withdrawn, so we'll always stay on our bottom line here, and so now we're looking for slightly more, actually, for one that addresses it from the weather concerns point of view, resiliency. Those are our three projects.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beckwith. Members of the council, are there any questions for Mr. Beckwith? Counselor St. Hilaire?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Beckwith. A bunch of questions. I guess regarding the Beverly 400+ request for Independence Park, I note that it's $125,000 request for design work. Do you have any anticipation of what the total budget of Beverly 400+ is, and how much of this is going to come through the CPC or city funding?
Well, this particular part of it, Independence Park work, is just a fraction of what the overall budget is. I don't have visibility into what that overall citywide budget is. In terms of what would be expected beyond the $125,000, there will be some, there will be, next year, an application that'll come for us for actual work to be performed in terms of accessibility, refiguring pathways, walkways, an area where people will have the opportunity to have historic learnings, sort of talking about the history of the city and the park, that sort of thing. We don't have any price tags on that yet, and they did not have an estimate of those when we met.
So I guess my concern would be, without knowing the full scope of what is planned or what we're trying to do, a one-off request for $125,000 is just the sort of, you know, funding request that we've been talking about as being sort of in a vacuum, as a nice, but really no context into what the planning is. I have concerns about that particular one. If I may, Madam President, I also have questions about the Lynch Park and Girdler House. On the Girdler House, you know, is $81,500, is that the entire cost of the project?
Yes.
And we're funding the whole thing?
Yes, we are funding, because there was another project that we had, $31,000 project for storage that we had also approved under support for affordable housing, that the city solicitor also deemed was an expense that couldn't be paid out of that category of support that has to run to the building and the deed, and the deed restriction, which doesn't exist, very technical thing. And so they're going ahead with that project on their own. Part of it is mandated by the city. The building inspector is mandating different upgrades to the kitchen and things like that, so they're doing that entire project. And, you know, in terms of funding for the generator, we're, I believe we're funding every, if we're not, if they're making some sort of a contribution to it, it's a nominal amount, but the committee was very comfortable with protecting that building.
Okay, thank you. That's all for now.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there other questions or comments from Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam President. My questions are primarily about the Lynch Park project. They may be outside of your purview, Mr. Beckwith, on the Community Preservation Committee. Ms. Barrett may be able to answer some of them, but if not, I'm happy to send them to Ms. Keefe, who I believe is probably best equipped to answer them. But in the description of the proposal, there's a reference that other grant funding has been supporting this ongoing work, and I'm curious what specific grants we've leveraged to date in addition to any CPA funding, and then what grant funding we may be looking towards in the future, considering that this is just the design and permitting phase of what I'd expect. At some point, we'd want to actually carry out in terms of implementing some of the resiliency measures and otherwise.
So I have to say that the full application, which I don't have in my documentation here, was pages and pages and pages long that covered that, and the funding work that's going, has gone into the work at Lynch Park. From the CPC perspective, we had funded at one point, and you had approved $100,000 for immediate work to be done to the Carriage House. As it moved forward, as everything moved forward, and it became clearer that, this is my understanding, that the dangers to, the threats to Lynch Park, to the seawall, to the Rose Garden area, to the beach, and to the Carriage House itself, and the flooding, the ongoing flooding, et cetera, was much more, much more of a higher-cost project, a wider-scope project, that sort of thing. So the city did not spend $100,000 for some sort of immediate throw at the Carriage House, and really wants to look at what this phase, for us, was what should be done, what can be done, and to move forward with permitting as much as possible in the meantime, so that we can move to a stage of actually redesigning the area and back of the seawall with swales and other sort of natural protections to keep the park from flooding on that end. And in terms of the Carriage House, and what needs to be done to protect it, and whether it's maybe raising it up, maybe it's moving it, these are all just like potential things, or whether it's shoring it up in place as it is, and all that work, what is best, and to have experts really look at it, rather than, we don't want this thing to be hit, you know, during a major storm, and so we want to throw up extra support and things like that, to do it in a quick but more informed way. So that's what this project, you know, my understanding is that these analyses have to happen to decide what it is that it comes next, that any decisions about what has to be done next need to be informed, and we're helping with CPC funds to be able to get to that. And that was how, our perspective when we voted in favor of it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beckwith. So I guess setting aside the specific questions on the grant, which I can get follow-up on, the presentation that was given to you with regards to the project, I think the matters you outlined, the Carriage House, the Rose Garden, they're certainly worthwhile, it's a worthwhile endeavor to look to protect a very unique asset at Lynch Park. What I'm interested in is a larger picture of how we plan to finance, how we have financed the design work to date, and this is a piece of it, and then how we would plan to finance what's probably pretty significant-scale renovations. Was there any scope on that end of what the cost and the magnitude of the renovations at the end of the design process would be, or is it, was the focus of this application pretty narrowly tailored toward, we need this funding to get design moving so that we even know what the universe of cost is?
That's exactly what this was. It was very specific to that. What's the information that we need, and what are the permitting to be able to work on the seawall, for example, that, what environmental permitting needs to be done now and get in motion? So we do know from past presentations to the CPC that at some point in time, there will be a larger project that will be presented, some of which, the, there will be proposals coming before the CPC to be able to use Community Preservation Act funding for some of that work. But what that is yet, has yet to be determined, and has yet to come before us, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Beckwith. I'm certainly willing to support this proposal to keep that process moving, but at some point soon, I would expect, more likely it's from the city and the Sustainability Office than your committee, a more clear picture of what grants we've leveraged, what grants we're going to go for, and what we think the magnitude of the cost of the work at Lynch Park is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Housman, then we'll go to Counselor Spang.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I really wanted to follow up on the Lynch Park piece. So, I mean, Lynch Park is the crown jewel of our park system, and this CPC grant really addresses, you know, both sustainability and preservation factors that affect it. This is one grant in a continuing series of grants that the city has obtained, either from the state, or I believe even maybe from CPC, because Mr. Beckwith referred to, you know, restoration funds for the Carriage House. So this is, this is really very badly needed to keep the process going, as Mr. Beckwith said, in a, so we have an overall picture. So we're not just throwing money at trying to help the Carriage House without understanding how it fits into the bigger picture of sustainability in Lynch Park. Likewise, say with the Rose Garden, which had devastating flooding, I mean, totally flooding, looked like a swimming pool, with one of the storms this past winter. So an overall understanding from a sustainability point of view is really needed, has been ongoing, and this is hopefully something that will keep it going. I don't know, Ms. Barrett is here this evening, if, Madam President, could we ask her to answer a question from me relating to grant funding for Lynch Park?
I suppose we could. Ms. Barrett, would you be willing to come to the podium, please?
I don't know that Ms. Barrett has a complete picture around that, because Ms. Keefe at the Sustainability Office certainly would probably have a more holistic sense of it, but Ms. Barrett can really, I think, at least to some extent, talk about funding we've already had and funding that has been applied for, not necessarily granted, and this is a way to, you know, continue the process by having this funding. Ms. Barrett?
Yeah, so in my seven years, we've continually been applying for funding to support Lynch Park. There's been a lot of damage to the seawall, the Rose Garden, the Carriage House, and in the past, I think it's been sort of a Band-Aid approach to try to keep these assets in good shape for our residents to use. The grant that we most recently got, I believe, was for $325,000 from the Office of Coastal Zone Management, and that was the resiliency feasibility study to kind of examine what needs to be done at Lynch Park and what are the different options. And we had a series of public input, and we had also applied for another grant for $317,000 that unfortunately we declined. That grant, they were looking to fund, the state was looking to fund residential areas that were low-income and environmental justice, that were being directly impacted from flooding. And unfortunately, Lynch Park doesn't have flooding that affects people directly or homes directly generally, so I do have something I can read that, I don't know if you have the letter that was submitted to the CPC? Did you get the copies of that from Marina Keefe, our Sustainability Director? Do you mind if I just read a little bit from her letter? It says, let's see, that we're applying to the Community Preservation Act funding for design and permitting of resiliency measures for Lynch Park's seawall and structural analysis of the Carriage House. As members are aware, in 2023, the city secured $325,000 from the Office of Coastal Zone Management to draft a resilient vision for Lynch Park to prepare the park to better withstand the impacts of climate change. The Lynch Park resilient design project included the creation of a site plan, stormwater analysis, and geotechnical analysis. To address storm impacts, the project created a schematic design for critical repairs and improvements along the southeastern seawall to protect the Rose Garden. The schematic design improves public access to Lynch Park by redesigning the ramp leading to the shore for ADA compliance and to improve floodwater drainage. This project concluded in June of 2024, and the project information and deliverables are available on the Sustainability Office's webpage. The city applied in April 2024 for a $317,000 grant that I mentioned from the Coastal Zone Management's dam and seawall repair or removal program for a two-year project to finalize the schematic design for this portion of the park and begin permitting documentation needed to pursue construction funding. CZM did not award this project grant for the reasons I mentioned a few moments ago. So 88% of the program grant funds were dedicated to dam projects as well, so that was another Complementing the park resiliency work, the city solicitor proposed to update the 2017 conditions assessment of the Carriage House to identify the best options for the city to protect it from climate change, included, including an initial cost estimate and draft schematic design. So I think, like Chairman Beckwith mentioned, this is to keep things moving forward so that we can apply for additional grants and continue the work there, which will culminate in a project, which is going to be pretty sizable, as Counselor Sweeney probably anticipated. But we will be seeking grant and earmark funding to support a project at Lynch Park to preserve it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's it. I just wanted to sort of really emphasize that this is part of an ongoing process, and this will keep the process going.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Spang, please.
I just had a question through you, Madam President, about the Girdler House application.
Yes.
I had a resident reach out to me with some issues with the completely unrelated mechanical equipment placement on the roof during one of the other projects that they're working on at the Girdler House, so I just wanted to confirm that the generator would be on the ground, if you know.
That's the understanding, that there'd be an apron, concrete apron, that it would sit on outside, and one of the things that the committee has talked about is actually having the HDC, the Historic District Commission, involved in making sure the placement itself and things like that, you know, work for the historic building since it's significantly, historically significant to the city.
Thank you. And then just one more.
Yes.
As Counselor St. Hilaire noted, this would be paying for the entire project or a large portion of it with city tax dollars in some part, but if approved. So I know there's not necessarily a requirement that they meet with butters, but if anything can be done to help with a meeting with the neighborhood before the project kicks off, just so that people understand what work is happening and where. I can offer to help with that if it's appropriate, or through the HDC or the CPC, wherever it should happen, I'd just put in a plug for that.
Yeah, we can definitely talk to them about that, for sure. There should be minimal, since it's a generator outside, I mean, there'll be some, but it won't be, it shouldn't be any big, long project or anything like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beckwith. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bowen?
Thank you. So I appreciate the discussion so far, and particularly thinking about how these projects fit into bigger city priorities and neighborhood priorities, and I really see the CPC as an interesting piece of our collective funding, because it's more of like a participatory budgeting approach, where people come forward with all the ideas that they think fit in these different categories, and then those are sorted through and balanced against each other and against other potential funding sources. So one of the things that I found most interesting was the page with the overall CPA balances and what else is in this pipeline, because to me, the value of one project is also about the trade-offs for other projects. So just to confirm, it looked like you already have the pre-applications for the next round of funding in, and there is sufficient funding available, even if we were, you know, approving all of these tonight, there is still plenty to cover all of the other requests that have come in so far, and then those aren't final final yet, but there isn't like over-competition for these resources this year among worthy projects that fit these criteria.
That's correct. We're in a pretty robust fiscal position, which, looking ahead, means that when more sizable projects, whether it's something relating to Lynch Park or some other area of the city, come before us, then hopefully we'll have the resources to be able to participate in a larger way.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor St. Hilaire?
I guess just offering a different perspective.
I guess just offering a different perspective, not a lot of competition, and we are collecting a lot more money than we have a need for. We could also reduce the surcharge that we're applying to our taxpayers. But I guess that's a larger discussion.
Thank you, Councillor.
Madam President, in terms of the CPC or CPA communities, we're the 1% community, meaning that we have the 1% surcharge. It goes 1%, 2%, and 3%, basically it goes up to 3%. I'm not sure there's anything below the 1%. I do know, in just the five years I've been on the committee, there are years when the requests come. For example, if we get an open space request, the open space will tend to be hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that, or 1.1, the last one that we had, million. And so those are sizable. The affordable housing are very sizable. With, you know, the combined for Briscoe, for Anchor Point are in the millions as well. So that while we have a good, solid line item or budget surplus right now, there'll probably be sometime in the future when a project that otherwise couldn't receive support from the city will be able to be supported, because we do have a surplus. So it's, it's not necessarily a year-by-year thing, but to the councillor's point, we, we have been trying to really push hard on the budgets and the participation, whenever possible, from community groups, nonprofits, that aren't part of the city for a share of revenue and things like that. So we look, I think, at the budget the same way that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Beckwith. Any other comments or questions from councillors at this time? Mr. Perry or Mr. Ailes, was there anything that you wish to add? Mr. Dole, was there anything that you wished to add?
Good evening again. Jesse Dole, Assistant City Solicitor. I just wanted to put on the record that Solicitor Stephanie Williams was asked by the CPC to render a legal opinion, as called for under the ordinances, about whether CPC funds could be used for the Gerdler generator. And at the time, the initial, the application or the proposal was being reviewed was to use the, those funds for the Gerdler generator that would allow unanointed power to protect and provide the opportunities for the seniors that live there. Solicitor Williams issued an opinion that that would be an improper use of CPC funds, based on specific guidance from the state, that installation of generators primarily for the comfort and safety of residents and power outages was a rehabilitation activity, not a preservation activity. So that was the opinion that was issued. We have not been asked to review or issue an opinion as to the change in the application for the Gerdler generator to instead be for the purpose of protection of personal or real property from injury, harm, and destruction. I just wanted to put that on the record, because there was some reference to a difference in opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Dole. Mr. Beckwith?
I just say thank you very much for the clarification. The overall category that was being addressed the last time was whether or not it would be an affordable housing. And we came to before as the category for funding would be affordable housing. This time, we're coming for historic preservation. That's for, for affordable housing, the funding actually has to, for the comforts and, you know, all of that, has to actually run to the building itself. It can't run to the support of affordable housing in general. It has to run to the support of the, the creation of or some other means for affordable housing. Here, because we fortunately have a historic building that, that this is, the category that we're approaching, which we did talk about during our discussion with the city solicitor, is historic preservation. So it's a different use of the funds for preservation, under historic preservation, as opposed to something affiliated with the affordable housing function of the Gerdler House.
Thank you, Mr. Beckwith. At this time, Mr. Beckwith was the only member of the public on our sign-up sheet. Was there any other member of the public who wished to speak in this public hearing? Thank you. Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing. And I believe all subcommittees have finished their work, so I'll refer this back to the full council, and we can take this one on the floor. I'd like to suggest that we take this as three separate votes. That would allow Councillor Attender to come back for two of the three. He's recused from the Beverly 400-plus. So let's, if agreeable, I would entertain a motion first to approve the CPC out-of-cycle funding for Beverly 400-plus Independence Park. Let's take that one first.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this one? Councillor St. Hilare.
You know, I just feel to see the emergency nature of this out-of-cycle request and would encourage the committee to go back to the Beverly 400 and ask for a better plan and budget for the full entirety of what we're planning on doing. I just have a hard time, in a vacuum, approving $125,000, and we have no idea what we're planning to do at this point. That'd be my thoughts.
Thank you, Councillor. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? I guess not questions, but comments or discussion from the council? This is on the Beverly 400-plus Independence Park request. All right. All those in favor? All opposed? So that carries 7-1, thank you. And Councillor Attender, can someone retrieve him?
He's in the hall.
Oh, Councillor Housman, I think he's that way. Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Attender. Thank you, Mr. Ailes. So we have the two other out-of-cycle funding requests. Let's continue to take them, one vote at a time. So I would entertain a motion to approve the request for Lynch Park. Thank you. Any further discussion on this one? All those in favor? Thank you, that carries 9-0. And the third, the third request is for Gerdler House. I would entertain a motion to approve the out-of-cycle funding request for the Gerdler House project. Any further discussion?
I have one question.
Yes. Oh, Councillor Speng.
Thank you. Just curious to the Assistant Solicitor's comments, should this be approved, subject to some authorization or confirmation from the law department? Or are we okay to just approve?
We haven't received a request from the CPC that I'm aware of for a formal legal opinion as to the new application. That was really the only purpose I wanted to get.
Thank you. Councillor Bowen.
Thank you. It's maybe a further clarification of that question, that as with the previous application, when funding is approved, the CPC then moves to creating an MOU surrounding the project. And if there is any issue with the specific use of the funds for that purpose, it would be raised at that time, presumably.
Generally, any contractual agreement comes through the contract review process of Solicitor's Office, we review it, and then, you know, give feedback.
Thank you, thank you, Councillor, thank you, Mr. Dole. Councillor St. Hilare.
I guess my question would be, should we wait for that confirmation before we approve this? I guess, Mr. Dole, do you have any opinion on procedure there?
I have no opinion, I haven't reviewed. This was the first I saw tonight.
Does the council routinely get that confirmation before we vote on CPC funds?
I, I'm not going to speak to the history of these. I'm just, I just wanted, there was some reference made to some prior, sounded like disagreement with the Solicitor's opinion, that this was revised based on that feedback. I just wanted to clarify what the process had been, that, you know, and just to say, we, you know, we haven't, I'm not going to say we would deny it. I haven't, we haven't looked at it at all, so. But there was a reference to the prior, prior opinion of Solicitor Williams, and I felt it was appropriate to just give some background on it.
I guess it would seem to me that we should get that confirmation before we approve funding for this, but.
Councillor Housman.
Well, I would just say in response to that, we haven't had a request from the CPC to offer that opinion. And I'm not saying that I would require it, and I'm not suggesting that that be a prerequisite. I'm just saying that that was, I just wanted to respond that there was some reference to something that had happened previously, and I wanted to get the full details behind that. That's the only reason I brought it up. So I'm not suggesting that we would, we would, we would object to this, but I can't say, I have no idea about the legality around it.
But Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Dole, if I just can restate Councillor Bowen's question, and I think your answer, in the contractual process, it sounds like the law department would, at that time, review, and any concerns that were raised would then interrupt the process.
All I can say is, in the past, I've reviewed CPC MOUs for different various projects around the city. So we, that's, that's one thing that does come through.
Thank you. Mr. Beckwith, was there something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that when we do come to the MOU stage, then it's written and it's forwarded then, in this case, it was actually forwarded ahead of time, along with two others, to, to receive an opinion. And it's, it's actually, we had a very good meeting with the city solicitor and, and understand her and the city's position on it. It's not one that is based in a case that has been found or anything like that. But it was her deep investigation into the CPA and funding and a variety of sources that she looked at to be her opinion, which helped inform us in terms of the categories we should move forward on and what's possible for us with affordable housing requests that come before us. So we found it helpful. And our process, once we move forward, once you do an appropriation, is the preparation of a memorandum of understanding, and then those things are, because their contracts are then sent through that process to the Solicitor's Office, so.
Thank you, Mr. Beckwith. Councillor Housman.
Yeah, just briefly, it sounds to me like the process has already been adjusted to reflect an opinion of the city Solicitor's Office, and that the process going forward, if the council were to approve it, has a built-in self-correction mechanism. So I don't see any reason why the council can, you know, shouldn't take a vote tonight, one way or another, because it'll be no harm if down the road there's an issue. It will, it will come up in the ordinary course.
Thank you, Councillor. Any other discussion from councillors on this one? We do have a motion in a second. All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? That carries 9-0. Thank you very much. That takes care of those three requests for out-of-cycle funding. Thank you, Mr. Beckwith, for being here on behalf of your committee. Appreciate your time, and thanks to members of the public who have been here with us as well during this public hearing. Mr. Ailes and Mr. Perry, thank you for your work in our other two public hearings this evening. This does bring us to reports from committees. Ms. Kent.
Order number 296, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a budget transfer request of $36,112 into the Library Department budget to fund costs associated with the recently agreed-upon memorandum of agreement between the City of Beverly and the Library Employees Chapter of the AFL-CIO Union have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Other questions or comments? The question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Carries 9-0, thank you.
Order number 334, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Richard Scanlon to serve on the Board of Assessors, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Other questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries 9-0.
Order number 342, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a budget transfer of $98,600 into the Department of Public Services General Fund budget to fund costs associated with the recently settled contracts between the City of Beverly and DPS workers and forming unions. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries 9-0.
Order number 347, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a donation of $10,100 for the council on aging to benefit the council on aging and senior citizens in our community. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Other questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries 9-0, with our thanks for that very generous donation.
Order number 348, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a grant for $28,285.84 from the Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance to purchase 64 bulletproof vests for our offices to wear for protection, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries 9-0.
Order number 350, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a grant for $150,000 from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection Clean Water State Revolving Fund Grant Program, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Other questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries 9-0.
Order number 351, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a donation of 16 turkeys and 10 trees from U.S. Pavement to support our veterans. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries 9-0, and again, our thanks to U.S. Pavement for that generous donation, which has a little bit of a 12 Days of Christmas kind of gift feel to it. I asked Ms. Kent to sing it, she would not.
No. Order number 352, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding gifts from the University of Massachusetts Lowell Digital Equity Partnership to the Beverly Library. Have considered matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries 9-0.
Order number 353, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a transfer request of $350,000 from the Golf and Tennis Enterprise Account Undesignated Fund Balance Upon Certification into a Capital Project Fund to Pay Costs. Have considered said matter and recommend the council approve this request.
Set a public hearing, yeah, it doesn't say that, that's what I thought. Set a public hearing for January 6 at 7:45 p.m.
January 6 at 7:45 p.m.
Thank you, thank you.
I would entertain a motion, councillors, to set that public hearing as recommended by the Subcommittee for January 6, 7:45 p.m. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carries 9-0. So we'll set that public hearing for our January 6 meeting, 7:45 p.m. Order number 306, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a proposal that the City Council adopt a local option veteran property tax exemption created through Section 23 of Chapter 178 of the Acts of 2024. Have considered said matter. Receive and place on file.
Councillor Sweeney, this was originally your, your letter. Would you like to say anything about the process going forward?
Sure, thank you, Madam President. So we, Mr. Perry is still working with our Chair of the Board of Assessors to find a time to meet with the Finance and Property Subcommittee to further discuss this proposal. Even had it passed prior to the end of this calendar year that we're in, it still wouldn't have taken effect until the start of the next fiscal year, on July 1st. So given the process, what I think makes the most sense is to receive this specific order and place it on file. But my plan is to work with Mr. Perry and get essentially the same order before the council for consideration early in 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Sweeney. So this is a bit of housekeeping, as orders from 2024 drop off, and then, as Councillor Sweeney said, it will become an order of 2025. Thank you, Councillor. So are there other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion then to receive this and place on file as recommended by the Subcommittee. All those in favor? That carries 9-0.
Order number 314, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding acceptance of local options to defer payment of sewage charges, Mass. General Law, Chapter 83, Section 16G. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. So receive and place on file.
Oh, this one we approved, I think. 3-0. Oh, it's approved? Sorry. It's okay. Are there questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries 9-0.
Order number 315, the Committee on Finance and Property, Order number 315, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding an acceptance of local options to defer payment of water charges, Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 42J. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Other questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries nine zero.
Order number 316, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding acceptance of local options and defer payments of betterment assessments, Mass General Law, Chapter 80, Section 13B. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries nine zero.
Order 177, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a letter regarding second water meters, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend this received and placed on file.
Yes. I would entertain a motion to receive and place on file as recommended by the subcommittee. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Thank you. Carries nine zero.
Order number 116, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a 2024 capital expenditure plan pursuant to the city charter. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Receive and place on file.
I would entertain a motion to receive and place on file as recommended by the subcommittee. All those in favor. That carries nine zero. Thank you.
Order number 327, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding an appointment for Emily Hutchins to serve on the Historic District Commission. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this appointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries nine zero. And thank you very much for such easy to hear with us. Thank you for being here.
Order number 349, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding approval of a lease with AVR L.C. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve the request with amended lease starting in 2025 through 2030.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments on this? Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one question for the Chair, perhaps, of Legal Affairs. Is there any particular reason for the amendment that was mentioned by Ms. Kent?
I'm sorry, what order are we on?
For the airport?
For the airport, yes.
349.
Yes. The lease.
Can you add back your phone?
Yes, the lease, as submitted to the Committee, had the wrong term listed. And so, the correction was made to correct the reference in the lease to the proper term of the lease. From, in other words, term meaning the beginning of the lease and the end of the lease.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there other questions or comments on this one? I would entertain a motion to approve, as amended by the subcommittee, order number 349. Thank you. All those in favor. That carries nine zero. And thank you, Mr. Hanifin, for being here with us as well, our airport manager.
Order number 372, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding new application for a lodging house license for Barry's House at 23 Wallace Street. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve the request to have a probationary license to expire January 31st, 2025.
Are there questions or comments on this one? I would entertain a motion, oh, Counselor Hausmann.
Yeah, I just want to mention there are, I think, three of these where all the paperwork has not been completed in terms of inspections and compliance with the city. So, the council has the ability to make sure that, particularly with the lodging houses, they are not, don't have to be shut down at the end of the year. So, we've extended the provisional approval through the end of January to, in order for those to come into compliance. So, they'll be back before the council once that happens.
Thank you, Counselor. Entertain a motion to approve this. 372. 372. Thank you, Counselor. 372, as recommended by the subcommittee. Thank you. All those in favor. Thank you. Carries nine zero.
Order number 373, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a new application for a lodging house license for Cabot Lodge, LLC at 91-93 Cabot Street. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request to give approbation. Thank you. License expiring January 31st, 2025.
I would entertain a motion to approve, as recommended by the subcommittee. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Carries nine zero.
Order number 371, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a renewal application for a lodging house for Garden City Residents Cosmos Realty Trust at 490 Rantoul Street. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve the request to grant a probational license expiring January 31st, 2025.
A lot of reading tonight. Other questions or comments on this one? I entertain a motion to approve, as recommended by the subcommittee. All those in favor. Carries nine zero. Thank you.
Order number 329, Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for John Roulett to serve on the Design Review Board, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries nine zero. Thanks to Mr. Roulett for being willing to serve. Sorry.
Order number 339, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for George Gomes to serve on the Planning Board. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries nine zero with our thanks to Mr. Gomes as well.
Order number 341, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Derek Beckwith to serve on the Beverly Planning Board. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero. Thank you, Mr. Beckwith, and thanks for being here with us this evening as well.
Order number 354, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a renewal application for a Class II Motor Vehicle Dealer's License for NDRN, Inc., DBA Five Star Auto Repair at 191 Essex Street. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council grant this license.
Questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero.
Order number 355, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding renewal application for a Class II Motor Vehicle Dealer's License for Beverly Auto Center at 129 Brimble Ave. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this license.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero.
Order number 356, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a renewal application for a Class III Motor Vehicle Dealer's License for Eastern Cycle Salvage, Inc., 87 Park Street. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero.
Order number 357, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a renewal application for a Class II Motor Vehicle Dealer's License for IGM Enterprises, Inc., DBA Cobblestone Motors, 119 Rantoul Street. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries nine zero.
Order number 358, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding renewal application for a Taxi Liberty License for Malden Car Services, Inc., 52 Friend Street, for two vehicles. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Sorry. Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Thank you. That carries nine zero.
Order number 359, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a renewal application for a Class II Motor Vehicle Dealer's License for DeBacchus?
DeBaccos.
DeBaccos Service Center, 474 Rantoul Street. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero.
Order number 360, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding renewal application for an automatic amusement device license for Anchor Pub and Grill at 20 Cabot Street. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero.
Order number 361, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding application for an automatic amusement device for the Lucky Dog Sports Bar at 129 Cabot Street. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero.
Order number 362, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a renewal application for an automatic amusement device license for Hale Street Tavern, 717 Hale Street. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero.
Order number 363, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a renewal application for an automatic amusing device license for Beverly Franco American Club, 44 Park Street. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero.
Order number 364, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding renewal application for an automatic amusement device license for Vittori Rocky Post, 56143 Brimble Ave. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries nine zero.
Order 365, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding renewal application for an automatic amusement device license for Union Club, Inc., 141 Cabot Street. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries nine zero.
Order number 366, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a renewal application for a lodging house license for 68 Dane Street, LLC, DBA Greycroft Inn at 68 Dane Street. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries nine zero.
Order 367, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding renewal application for a lodging house license for 276 Street, LLC, at 276 Rantoul Street. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries nine zero.
Order number 368, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a renewal application for a lodging house license for North Shore Veterans Counseling Services, Inc., at 45 Broadway. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries nine zero.
Order number 369, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding renewal application for a lodging house license for Gerdola House at 78 Luthrup Street. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. Carries nine zero.
Order number 370, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a renewal application for a lodging house license for Gregor Jajazi at 32 Broadway. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor. That carries nine zero. I'm sure I hacked that name. Ms. Kent? Did they do 320? Did you do a reappointment for Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
I don't have. Oh. Let's see. Oh, 320 is renewal application for Class II Motor Vehicle License for Todd's Automotive Repair, DBA Beverly Farms Auto. I do not have those. What number was it? Three. Sorry. I entertain a motion for just a two-minute recess so that we can. Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, call us back to order, thank you very much. Um, we've got three twenty and three forty. Legal Affairs had quite a lot of things in your folder.
We have located them. They were put together.
Located with the others.
Yep.
Uh, Ms. Kent?
Order number three twenty, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a renewal application for a class-two motor vehicle license for Todd's Automotive Repair Service, Inc., DBA Beverly Farms Auto Service, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Are there questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order number three forty, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Sarah Bartley to serve on the Beverly Planning Department, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Are there questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries nine zero, with our thanks to Ms. Bartley for being willing to continue on the board as well.
Order number three thirty-five, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for J. David Sumeski, Sumesby. Sumesby. To serve on the Harbor Management Authority, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment and approve the waiver. Do you want to do that two separate?
Two separate, yeah.
Okay, approve this reappointment.
And a residency.
And a waiver of residency.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so we'll take this as two separate votes. We'll do the waiver of residency first. Are there any questions or comments on that? I would entertain a motion to approve a waiver of residency for this applicant as recommended by the Subcommittee. All those in favor? That carries nine zero. And then I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment as recommended by the Subcommittee. All those in favor? That carries nine zero as well. Thank you.
Order number three twenty-eight, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding appointment for Mario Tricomi to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this appointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye. That carries nine zero. Mr. Tricomi was here this evening. He's still watching. Thank you, Mr. Tricomi, for joining us.
Order number three thirty, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for William Lau to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
That carries nine zero, with our thanks to Mr. Lau.
Order number three thirty-one, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Justin Rep to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
That carries nine zero, with our thanks to Mr. Rep.
Order number three thirty-two, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Nancy Marino to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve the reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
That carries nine zero, with our thanks to Ms. Marino.
Order number three thirty-three, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Justin Jordan to serve on the Board of Health, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this appointment.
I'm going to recuse myself.